Good evening. This is a member -- this is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is two minutes after seven, and the date is February 23. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. The Board consists of five members and two alternates. The alternates taking full part in the discussions and becoming voting members in the absence of a member or when a member abstains for conflict of interest. Present tonight are Ms. Drabow, Joan Kraniewski, Kate Townsley, who's an alternate, who will be taking place, revoting tonight in the absence of other people, and Lisa Carson, who will also act as a full member tonight. I'm Betty Hollow, the acting chair, and also present is Brian Zulick, and he is acting as our secretary tonight in the absence of Paul Eschenbacher. Often, we have John Pesky with us, the zoning administrator, but he is not able to be here tonight. Either so, all falls to Mr. Zulick. The Board operates according to the following procedure. The chair will name and describe the case. The zoning administrator will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The appellant or their representatives will give reasons why the appeal should be viewed favorably. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. If necessary, the appellant or their representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Then testimony from the floor will be closed, and the Board will deliberate and render a decision. According to Athens City Code Section 2307-03B, the Board has power to grant variances from the strict application of the code, provided the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the code is observed, public safety and welfare are secured, and substantial justice is done. According to Athens City Code Section 2309-10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the Board finds, based on direct, specific findings of fact, that each of the following conditions has been supported. Practical difficulty and undue hardship because of exceptional -- excuse me -- or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property. A literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and the same vicinity, while a granting of the requested variance will not convey on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone and the same vicinity. Excuse me. Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which the variance is sought, one or the other or in combination, is not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. Any person, resident or officer, department or appointed body of the city of Athens aggrieved by the decision of the Board. May petition the Athens County Court of Common Pleas concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition must be filed within 30 days after the mailing of the decision of the Board to the applicant. There are two cases on tonight's agenda. The first case is 1001V at 1 North Court Street. The second case is 1002V at 192 East State Street. The Board is required to take testimony under oath, so would anyone wishing to speak concerning any item on the agenda, please stand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will present to the Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then we have to ask Mr. Zulick if he's going to speak to us also and wishes to be sworn in.
I do.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let us hear from Mr. Zulick about the first case. This is, as I said, of the case 1001V at 1 North Court Street. This is Peoples Bank Kessler Sign Company appellants, and they are requesting a variance from Section 230313I1I to allow placement of a wall sign that is set back 6.4 percent of the width of the building or eight feet from the edge of the building, where 10 percent or 12.5 feet is the required minimum.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, the way they're asking, just a four-foot variance, basically, for to move the sign, because of the length of the building. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. In that case, we will ask the appellant or the representative from Peoples Bank Kessler Sign Company, I believe, to come forward. If you'll tell us your name, come right up here, and address for the record, if you would.
Good evening. My name's Doug Gaber. I'm with Kessler Sign Company, 2669 National Road, Haynesville, Ohio. We have been contracted by Peoples Bank during the remodeling, reconstruction, to design new signage as a replacement for the existing signage that was at their present office. So we designed the new internally illuminated individual channel letters, and the existing signage was already in the exact same, except a little higher, in the same between the pillars and the openings of both the front street on Court Street and on West Washington presently. So, but during the remodel, then they asked to reapply for the new signage. I'm be note that you had a 10 percent rule on the Washington Avenue side, Washington Street side. So we are asking that the sign be allowed to be placed back into the same place and be centered as we feel will be aesthetically pleasing and balanced of the building of the new remodel with the front signage as to where it is allowed. I do have concept drawings of the placement, both if it were to be at 12 feet and at the eight feet that we're asking for.
Okay. I'd like to see that. Do we have those in our packets?
You do not. You only have probably the placement as the variance. I do have a concept that may be a little better.
Okay.
I also have a photo of where the existing signs used to be, if that's helpful to you.
Yes, it would be.
Currently, there's a sign on the Court Street side.
The Court Street meets in the area. If you look at this perspective drawing, this is the existing sign on Court Street, and we're asking that this sign be centered over on Washington Street side between there. This is eight feet between this column, and if we were to do that, it pushes this back underneath the alarm back here, being 12 feet back. Okay. That's a little better, straight-on shot, conceptually.
Okay, so this is all the way.
That kind of gives you an idea of what it would look like if we had to push it back to 12 feet.
Let's see that. Oh, okay, that would look dumb, wasn't it?
Yes.
Somebody would say.
What happened there?
It's very common to run into the 10 percent rule in our business, only normally it's where you have storefronts abutting each other with a demising line to keep them from crowding each other. So it's a very common rule, and suits the purpose in most cases, except that's what we feel.
And this is an internally illuminated sign?
Yes, individual channel letters, yes.
Okay. Will they move around?
No.
Okay. And nobody had any problem with the fact that it will be illuminated?
No.
Okay.
And the existing sign on Court Street was permitted as such. So it's an exact clone, same size as the one, the current one, on Court Street.
Okay. So am I correct in thinking that, at this point, this whole building is flush in all the same color?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so this is, this looks like so.
I took those photos prior to the building being completed.
Right, so the whole wall of the building is all flush and all the same color, so the possibility of putting the sign over here would work also, right? I mean, you don't have to just off-center it, right? The building is 125 feet long.
Right.
Right, so you would catch people's eye coming across. That's what you're looking for, is?
Yeah, well, the visibility going down Court Street, because it is a one-way street, is the challenge.
Right, right, right. And so there really is nothing to block there. I mean, that Chris Street is not very big yet.
Except for the courthouse.
So this is the way it would look if they had to do the 12 feet. Do it off-center, but there's also plenty of room down here. This is all solid.
But I think you want the Peoples Bank above where you would enter the bank, probably, as well.
Right, and that's the entrance, yes.
Right, okay. That makes sense to me. Right, I think we have. So we do have this little picture. Okay. Looking for my little picture. Okay. I think it looks perfectly okay. Anything else that you think we should know?
Have a representative from Peoples Bank, if you have any questions with them, Larry Holdren, and I think that covers it.
Okay. Well, if you wish or need to, we'll come back to you at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So is anyone who wishes to speak favorably for this variance? Okay.
Do you want anything up here? My name is Larry Holdren, and I'm an executive vice president with Peoples Bank, and I'm also a regional manager, and this is part of our, part of my region. We were kind of, we do not own that building. It is owned by Mr. Hayes and Mr. Hodgson, and they decided last year to put student housing above our building, which has been a challenge, having students living above a bank. But, so ordinarily, we would not have done anything with the signage, but I think if you've seen the signage that we've put on Court Street, it probably is, looks much better than what we had up there, and this signage will be exactly the same thing. So we would ask your consideration in letting us do this, so that it can go over both entrances, so that it can be seen from, if you're coming up Court or if you're coming up Washington Street. So we appreciate any consideration you can give us. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did you tell us your name and address?
Yes. My name is Larry Holdren, H-O-L-D-R-E-N, and my address is, I live in Little Hawking.
Okay, thank you very much. Is anybody who wishes to speak in general about this sign? Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this sign? Anything else you would like to add to your testimony?
Nothing, just on.
Okay. Any questions that you'll have that you want to ask? I guess I have one question. The blue sign facing Court Street, on the Court Street side, is the signage on, facing West Washington Street, are they both the same size?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
You should have in your packet the size of the sign, which is much less than what even is allowed or what the existing sign used to be.
Okay. All right, so we'll close the discussion from the floor, and we will have a motion and go through the findings and see what we think. So have we got the motion for this case? This variance.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Make the motion that.
Let's see. Start with Peoples Bank.
I move to grant the various to case number 10-01V at 1 North Court Street for Peoples Bank slash Kessler Sign Company. I'm requesting the variance from Section 23.0313I1I to allow placement of a wall sign that is set back 6.4 percent of the width of the building or eight feet from the edge of the building, where 10 percent or 12.5 feet is the required minimum.
Second? A second. Okay. All right, any discussion you want to have, or you just want to go through the findings and discuss as we go along? I think findings are fine.
Yep.
Okay, first one is practical difficulty and undue hardship because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property. A literal enforcement of these regulations will result in a practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. So is there an exceptional circumstance, and will we create a hardship or difficulty if we don't grant the variance? I think that practical difficulty, sorry, that someone else renovated the building, and had they not renovated the building, they would not have replaced the sign, which would have been grandfathered in, and they wouldn't be here tonight. And it's true, it is a very long building, and since the sign is going to be inset, it would be odd not to center it, I think, so. I do think it would look just fine down on the side. Farther down, but I don't think it would serve their purpose nearly so well as, because down there, it's really sort of student rentals. I mean, the bank is down there, but where you enter the bank is where you want the sign to be, I think, where people will see it. Okay, so this is, this requirement sort of overlaps what we've already said, exceptional circumstances. Okay, so we're saying that the existing face of the building is more easily accommodated by centering this sign, that it will therefore look much better and serve its purpose much better.
And I would also say it will equal what is on the other corner.
Okay. And I have to also say it will look much better than the existing sign. Okay. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and the same vicinity, while a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone and the same vicinity.
Well, we have granted some other signage.
Yes.
Yes.
So. Do you want to speak specifically to that sign that we know we granted fairly recently for similar purposes?
Well, the church sign. It was the church sign. I'm thinking of the Episcopalian church, but I'm sure there was another one, maybe.
Well, I guess I'm thinking more specifically of the college bookstore, because.
Oh, that's correct, on the corner.
They did a renovation. They wanted a sign on Union Street, as well as the sign on Court, and the configuration of their building at the corner did the same sort of thing. So they wanted a sign on the front and one on the side. They didn't want to run it all the way down the other side of the building, but wanted it close to the front. So it seems to me this is a very similar circumstance. Okay, minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. I would say that would be the case in that we have two openings, and we're going to make them equally viewable, visible. So I think that the only other possibility is that. It is in the corner. They could make a smaller sign, you know, but then we lose balance. Well, the size of it, I guess they could make a teeny little sign, but what they're asking for is well within the limits of what they're allowed. So the fact that it's going to be farther from the corner, no one is ever going to know that except us. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. I think that's correct. Okay.
Maybe it'll encourage smaller signs.
Well, that would be nice, wouldn't it? Okay, or better-looking signs, either one. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition. And we certainly do see signs and have requests for signs, but I think there is, in fact, a general regulation, and I'm willing to give this one a variance from that regulation. So any comments or other things you want to say before we vote? Okay, so let's start with Ms. Drabow.
I vote yes.
Okay, Ms. Carson?
Yes.
Ms. Townsley?
Yes.
Ms. Kraniewski?
Yes.
Okay, I also vote yes. So you have the variance, and you can speak to the code office about what you need to do now.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have only one other case tonight. Okay, the second case, 1002V, is at 192 East State Street. This is an R1 district. Jack Arbuthnot is the appellant, and he is requesting variances from Section 230401A-I. No, I think that's another little one. No, one. To allow two rental properties on one lot, where one rental property is the maximum allowed, and from Section 2311 Table B, off-street parking requirements to allow a duplex with a total of four tenants with one parking space, where five parking spaces are the minimum required. So, Mr. Zulick, would you like to speak to this first?
Well, this one here, I mean, what he's asking for is pretty self-explanatory. It's a little different, because he does currently have a rental permit for a triplex, which is up to six people, and he's asking to go down to a duplex, to four, and his parking right now, if he stays current, is grandfathered, if he doesn't make any changes. So other than that, you know, he can do it. And the way the code's written, because he's going to go from a triplex to a duplex, he now is required to meet the current parking requirements when you make a change.
Okay.
So it's a slight change of use.
Okay. Okay. Well, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, the way his statement reads, essentially, we elected to give up the apartment at 194 and merge those spaces back in the main section of the building. So does that mean he's still paying his rental permit for 194?
Yes, he is at this, yes, he has. Everything is paid current for the triplex.
Okay.
So if he put the wall back, he could have a triplex again.
Just a clarification. In his statement, it said three occupants per unit, so wouldn't that be nine?
Well, he's not now allowed to rent the main body of the house, which is really one of the reasons he's before us. As it stands now, since they incorporated the north apartment into the building.
Yes.
It doesn't exist, except insofar as they have a permit for it. Okay. It's a virtual apartment. It's a virtual apartment.
He only had a rental permit, even though it's a triplex, he only had a rental permit for two units. The third one, the center one, was for the owner.
Okay, yeah. And so it's never been a rental, and so that's part of the question. Can he have a duplex in an R1 district when it says in his permit that that can only be owner-occupied? So that's part of what we're being asked, I think, is to give him permission to rent that part, which has never been rented before, and to allow enough parking to do that. Well, is it stated somewhere in here that he was allowed the rental permits if the main residence were owner-occupied? Yes, in fact, Mr. Zulick has that, and I think he should bring it up and let you see that before we get to Mr. Arbuthnot, just so you understand the situation. So when the Arbuthnots bought the house. So the approved rental permits. So it had been owner-occupied, and they said it was empty, but it is the thing, said it was the owner. And the previous owners had rented the two apartments, but the middle was owner. So it doesn't say it explicitly, except here. So they basically have two rental permits? Yes. Could they transfer one rental permit? Well, we talk about that as we go along. We haven't heard from Mr. Arbuthnot yet. Let's see what he says. Non-conforming triplex since 1975, owner, with the owner living in one unit, partner is grandfathered. Okay, let's hear from Mr. Arbuthnot with their rental.
These are what's approved rental permits. This one was refused, because this is.
Okay. See, he wasn't even asking for the rental. The other people's closed it out. So if this is 2004, don't you have to renew the permit every year?
No.
Pay the fee?
You'll pay your fee every year.
Okay, and so that's been paid? Okay. I was looking to see what was in here. Previous owner. Anybody else want to see what this looks like? Okay. Can I ask one other question, and I don't know if this is a code question, or, because it's a deed issue. It's interesting that in the deed, even though at that time there were two apartments, the deed only sells 192, and. Well, that's the main house, so then it happens to have these apartments in it that have separate numbers, but. Okay. They are part and parcel of the house. Anything else? Before we get Mr. Arbuthnot? Mr. Arbuthnot?
Yes, are you ready?
Yes, we are. Will you state your name and your address, please?
I will. My name is Jack Arbuthnot. I live at 12635 Wyatt Run Road in Haynesville, Ohio. I'm here as co-owner of this property. I own this property in conjunction with my son, Skylar Arbuthnot, who cannot be here tonight. He's currently doing airborne training in southern Georgia. That's one of the issues that I'd like to speak to eventually. My son and I bought this property in 2004 for several reasons. We did this once before, when he was going to school in Seattle and restored a house there, which had long been a student rental, and then ended up selling it to a family, which made us very happy. Our intention was to do the same thing here. This particular property, I don't know if you've seen it, I think I enclosed some pictures for you to look at. I love the place. I think it's a wonderful house. And our intention was to provide housing for him while he was finishing up school at OU, and then do the same thing, that is, restore this house to what it once was and to sell it to a family. And to some extent, our goals have been achieved. To other extent, things have not worked out quite as we had planned. So let me tell you what we did. We did buy it. Skylar and some of his friends lived there, some of them renting out the apartment at 194. We rented the apartment at 190 to single people, even though it has, for some strange reason, a permit for three, even though it's just a one-bedroom place. I don't quite understand that, but that's the circumstance. When he finished school, we essentially gutted the main house, and we gutted the apartment at 194 and merged it into the main house. It probably, if I rebuilt a wall, could be made into an apartment again, but I have no intention of doing that. That's not our goal. Our goal was that this be restored to family housing with a rentable apartment, either for income purposes or for. for income purposes or for a family member, a true mother-in-law apartment. The remodeling was necessitated by the fact that the kitchens available to the main house and to the apartment at 194 were extremely narrow, like not even as wide as your hallway out there. So that was done, at considerable effort and expense, I might add, although that's perhaps irrelevant. So, when Skylar finished school and we finished the remodeling, he, for reasons that are irrelevant here tonight, decided to join the Army. That's another story. I don't want to go there. In any case, so our intention was to put the house on the market. We thought it would probably sell reasonably soon, although about that same time, the economy tanked and the housing market went down with it. So it's been on the market now for close to two and a half years, has not sold. It's been shown a lot. People like the house, but there are other things that bother them, a small backyard or whatever. So it's still on the market. Skylar would like to be able to rent out his home while he's in the military. He'll be gone for another two and a half years. He's leaving to go overseas at the end of this month. We can't do that, so that house remains empty. It has been empty since he finished school and since we started the remodeling process. The apartment at 190 has remained rented to one person at a time. I understand that parking is an issue, and I, I don't have any complaints about the parking regulations. Although, I would say, when we first bought the house, it required at least six parking spaces for the two apartments, plus parking for whoever lived in the main house, however many vehicles they might have had. So one might reasonably think eight or nine parking spaces were required. What we're asking for in this variance would reduce that number of required parking spaces down to four. We do have parking on the property off-street for at least three vehicles and possibly four, depending upon their size. We have a two-car garage, and we have a parking space by the house, which will, will accommodate two cars easily. Yes, it would be a variance because they don't quite meet the required size, but nonetheless, three cars can park off-street without any problem whatsoever. So we've essentially, what, we might have a circumstance where one car needs to be on the street, where in the past, it would have been six cars on the street. So I think our intentions here are good. We do want this to be a family house. I don't think there are students who would be able to rent this place in this current circumstance. I mean, I suppose technically, somebody could rent it to students. But that's not our goal, and I, and I hope that the house won't ever become a student rental house. We want a family there. We want somebody who's going to take care of that property the way we have. So, I think all we're asking for is that things be sort of rearranged here. I understand that it doesn't meet the letter of the law, but I think we've tried our darndest to meet the spirit of the law and, and try to have one more family residence on the east side of Athens. So that's all I have to say. Let's see if we have some questions.
Is there a question at this point? Why would the variance ask for one parking space when you're saying there are three, maybe four, available?
I need five in general.
I know, but why?
Well, if, what, what we're asking for is, the apartment at 190 has a permit for three people. We're willing to give that up and have that changed to one person.
Mm-hmm.
And then if the main house is rented, you have three, technically, legally, three unrelated persons. They each could have a vehicle, so that's a total of four vehicles. We currently have parking off-street for three and possibly four, depending upon the size of the car, cars in there. So possibly legally, we would need one car to park on the street.
Since stack parking is allowed in an R1 district, is there space in front of the garage to park a car?
Yes, although it would be, I think John Paskey's position on that is, he says it's on the city's right-of-way. There's a, there's a brick apron that runs from Merkel Street up to the garage.
Okay.
You certainly could put a car there.
It's very tight, though.
If, if it were not a Lincoln Town Car, yeah.
So tell us the dimensions of the garage, and then Mr. Zulik can tell us what is required for size for each car.
The garage measures 17.5 feet across, that is the opening, and 20 feet deep.
Okay, and Mr. Zulik, we need 18 feet and 20 feet. Would that be right, to have two parking spaces?
A legal parking space size is either nine by 20.
Okay.
Or 10 by 18.
Okay, so this is 17.5 by 20.
That's correct.
And we need 18 by 20.
That's correct.
Given the size of the door, would you able to, I mean, you could get them side-by-side in there. Can you get them in there?
If, you know, again, it depends, if they're compact cars, no problem. If they were Lincoln Town Cars, you could not.
Right, okay.
The parking, the con, there's a concrete parking pad in front of the apartment. You know, if somebody had a big car, they could park out there, I suppose. That one's 18 and a half feet by 20.
But I take it that at the front end of it, because of the steps, there is a narrowing toward the front of the parking pad, is that right? The steps to the apartment squeeze in there?
That is correct. Well, yes and no. I mean, it's a, it's what, trapezoidal-shaped parking pad. So on one side, you have, it goes back 16 feet, and then there's a two-foot sidewalk, which would make it 18. There's also an area that's planted with shrubs. If you took out the shrubs, you'd get another two and a half feet.
Okay.
So on the short side of the trapezoid, you have somewhere between 16 and 20.5 feet available.
Okay.
On the long side, where the steps are entering the apartment.
Mm-hmm.
You have 26 and a half feet before you hit those steps.
26.
On the long dimension.
I just see 16.
You have 16 from Merkel Street to the corner of the house.
Okay, and going the.
Two and a half to an area where there's some.
Trees.
Myrtle planted and a couple of trash trees, frankly, that I would like to cut out of.
Okay, all right.
And then eight feet of that tree space before you get to the steps. So it's a total of 26 and a half on the, the uphill side.
Okay.
So I, you know, I'm pretty sure there are two conforming spaces.
Could you, could you mind coming up here and showing me what you're talking about?
Pardon me?
Could you come up to me and show me what you're looking at? Okay, so I'm looking at this little thing, and so when you're talking about the 26, are you talking about all the way up to here?
Starting at this point, you have 16 up here to the corner of the house.
Right, okay.
Add two and a half to where the shrubs are.
Okay, so that gives you 18.
That's 18 and a half, and then you have eight more feet before you get to the corner.
Okay, and you could still have a little bush right there.
Well, I'm sure you could take that bush out.
Well, that would look sort of biased.
And this.
Okay, so that would give you, is that where we're getting?
26 and a half.
Okay, so 26 and a half, and then you've got 18.6 here, and then up here, if you took the bushes out, you'd still have the 18.6. So you do have room for two cars there, if you left me one little bush here and took those out.
Well, I think that also, Co-Director mentioned the whole right-of-way, like he did in front of the garage. There's probably a right-of-way he'd want.
I suspect.
Yeah, that this area down here is kind of, you wouldn't want.
But it's off the street.
It is off of Merkel.
It is off the street.
I understand.
And starting right at this corner, this is all shrubbery.
Right, right. I walk here, so I know this, I know this area, yeah.
City Council does give people permission to park in the right-of-ways, depending on the circumstances.
Right, this is all written, this is all.
I don't know what that means.
I'm not sure how far the right-of-way extends up there.
Well, I would have no way of knowing.
Yeah, do you know, Mr. Zulik, the right-of-way?
Not without, not without looking at plot maps and getting it out.
Township is 20 feet from the center of the road, out both ways, but I don't know.
I don't know what, I mean, we go from the center of the road for, from Merkel.
The road is very skinny.
But I don't know what Merkel right-of-way is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very small.
My guess is the house is through Merkel Street, probably 16 or 18.
Yeah.
Well, certainly, you could. This house was built, what, 1900, 1901 or '02?
192 was built in the late 1890s. We don't know which year.
It would be very later.
The little house at number two used to be the servants' quarters for that house, and it was built, we think, sometime in the 1930s.
Well, and you and I know that the house was in the 1905 Atlas of the County.
Correct.
It's one of the prominent houses in, along that street.
Yes.
Okay, so what is this historic house?
I have a question. You said about the apartment, you said it's a one-bedroom apartment.
With the one at 190?
Yeah.
Actually, they both were. 190 and 194 were a one-bedroom apartment.
That was my question.
With a living room and a kitchen and a bath.
Okay. I think maybe Mr. Pesky said to me that the dimensions of the bedroom made them not appropriate, but allowable for three people. Depending on the size of the bedroom determines how many people.
That would be my impression.
Yeah, the first, the, of legal size for one person is 70 square feet.
Right.
And then 50 square feet for each additional person.
Okay.
And so.
Sounds like an apartment.
So it was, it was allowed, it was big enough for three people.
By, by the terms allowed, okay.
I wouldn't rent it to three people, but maybe it's legal.
Well, just turning that around, if you ended up selling the property, somebody else might.
Well, but if it has a rental permit for one.
That's, that's why I'm willing to change the rental permit from three to one.
I understand.
That would prevent that.
I understand.
Although, I suppose they could petition to do that because the bedroom is big enough. But, okay, you could rent it to three people now, so.
Yeah.
You know, in all honesty, if a family lived at 192, I can't imagine that they'd want three students living in the apartment next door to them. But it's possible.
Right, right.
I am surprised that the house hasn't sold because it is a lovely old house, and you all have done a nice job with it. Anything else you want to tell us?
I don't think so.
Anything else you want to ask at the moment? Okay, you can come back if need be.
All right.
In the meantime, we'll ask if there is anyone who wants to speak for this variance. Anyone who wishes to speak in general comment? Okay, would you state your name and address, please?
Good evening, I'm Edward Baum, 20 Sunnyside Drive. I co-chair the Near East Side Neighborhood Association, and I represent the executive board of that association in the discussion. Somewhat over 20 years ago, much of the Near East Side was R2, zoned R2, and there was a growing concern over the maintenance of the single-family residential nature of that particular neighborhood. We had a series of meetings, and then working with the Planning Commission and City Council, we got the whole area zoned R1. Recognizing that within that area, there were a number of properties, triplexes, duplexes. Down the street from me, there's a four-apartment complex in, on Sunnyside, but the hope was that over a long period of time, that the number of multiple-family dwellings would be reduced. When we first heard about this, we heard a house being turned into a duplex, and we were a little concerned about that. But after looking at it more carefully, if the effect is to reduce the number of persons permitted to be in the house, then we have no problems with it because it, in the long term, will get to what we want on the Near East Side. So, the first blush was, uh-uh, but I think the present status is, if he's willing to have the permits to limit it to two people in each apartment, then that fits within the general overall scheme of what we're trying to accomplish in the Near East Side.
Okay, and just, and just to be sure, we know what we're talking about, he's asking for one person in the apartment and three unrelated people in the house, or possibly a family.
Four people total.
Yeah.
Right now, I understand, he could have five. In fact, he could have more than that.
That's not what his rental permit is requesting, so.
Well, let me get a clarification on that.
The original permit, three in 190, three in 194, owner occupied with any size.
So you could have up to nine or 10.
Sure.
And if.
If he still had that apartment, which he doesn't, but which he could have theoretically.
Right, he could have theoretically. So on that basis, that this improves the, reduces the density of occupancy, we do not object.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone to speak in opposition? There's hardly anyone left here, so yes. Comments?
My wife and I.
Mr. Lamb?
The letter that should be in the packet.
Yes, okay. Well, I didn't see the letter, so.
No, did not receive the letter.
We did not receive the letter.
Here's the.
So speak to us. Are you opposition?
Yeah.
Okay, speak, speak to us. We didn't get the letter.
Tell us your address, Mr. Lamb.
Should I, should I read the letter?
Sure.
You haven't read the letter?
That would be great. We do not have the letter.
Tell us your name and address, please.
I'm Will Lamb, and I live at 196 East State, which is next door to the property in question.
Okay.
I guess there's copies of them right here.
We don't have them up here, so.
That Paul must not have got any.
That must have gone before the two things removed.
Maybe.
Didn't get a chance to get them to us. I was wondering whether there's. Here's one more. I have it right here.
We're good.
Here it is, an extra.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody's got one?
We do.
Do you just want a minute to look it over, or do you want me to read it?
Well, I wanted to go ahead and read it. We'll read along with you.
All right, and I, and I'll have a clarification, that after, now that I know more, because part of why I'm here tonight is to hear the whole story, and I do have some similar reaction to some of what's been said.
Okay.
"We're writing to voice our opposition to the variance requested on the property next door to ours. We're concerned for several reasons about this property once again becoming a student rental with up to four tenants without the owner as one of the residents." I'd probably put an underline under that part of it, that, because I, I think it's one of two concerns in particular. It's, it's the number of people without the owner present, or that it wouldn't be a single-family. One of the, those are the two sticking points for me still. First, the house would not have sufficient parking. Parking is already scarce in the neighborhood. Several houses, including ours, do not have off-street parking, and many students and uptown workers park on this stretch of State Street. Granting this variance would only exacerbate the problem. Second, student rentals are typically very noisy and not very well-maintained. Our house is only 10 to 15 feet away from the property in question, and we'd be subject to a great deal of extra noise. Our four-year-old daughter's bedroom is nearest to that house. The house and, the houses in the area are among the most attractive and expensive on East State and are very visible to everyone passing, as they are right on State Street. Quite a few people have told us that they think Mr. Arbuthnot's house is the prettiest on the east side. I think it is the, one of the prettiest, if not the prettiest, on the east side. Letting it become a messy student rental would present a bad image of Athens to all passersby, further having a neighborhood student rental, a neighboring student rental would be detrimental to the values of the adjacent properties and thus the amount of property tax collected by the city. With the large number of new apartments in the city, we do not need to be turning more houses into student rentals. When this house, while this house was, when this house was previously a student rental, Mr. Arbuthnot's son and co-owner lived there. Skylar was a good neighbor, and is a very nice young man, and kept his roommates under control and the house tidy, and gave us fair warning also if there was going to be any sort of an event that we might take note of. So he was a very good neighbor. However, it was still noisier and not as well-maintained as would likely be as a single-family home. While we appreciate that Mr. Arbuthnot has been trying unsuccessfully for quite a while to sell it as a single-family home, and we've been trying to help in that purpose, we do not think it should be returned to rental status without a resident owner. So, that's the gist of what we were saying. And I too didn't really, in the paperwork that we get in the mail, didn't really comprehend the triplex-going-to-duplex piece of the story, and I, and I agree that that's a good trend, going from a triplex to a duplex, and going from three in the small apartment to one in the small apartment. from three in the small apartment to one in the small apartment. The two concerns I would still have would be if the main house, which is a fairly big house, is not a single-family house, that actually is a very big space, and if there's no owner present, and if the house were sold, and the variance you give to this property went to whoever bought that house, I have to say, there's some, a number of landlords whose property is based on our own attempts to renovate and improve our own house, which have been considerable.
Okay. So one concern is without having the owner there, and the other is, was there another?
Yeah, the level of rental, I mean, having the owner present is not, doesn't, well, it's not for me to say. But if the owner was present, we have a track record of knowing when the owner, when the co-owner of the property was there, the property was managed in a different way than the typical rental. That's not, that's not why we're here, because we were fine as neighbors that whole time. But without someone who has a financial interest in the ownership of the property, I'm very concerned. And really, the only way I'm not concerned if that happens is if it's rented, you know, to a person in the little apartment and a single-family in the main house. At least, that's my, that's my take on it.
And then your other concern is that if the variance is granted and the house is sold...
If the house is sold, that's what really, that's what really worries me. As I say, the house has been lovingly restored. It's in, it's in good shape. They're overtaking care of the house. The house is well-cared for, and a serious attempt has been made to sell the house. So I don't have a qualm with any of that.
And so you would like...
But there are lots of people in town who could own that house where I would not be a happy neighbor. And if they were allowed to do what a lot of people are allowed to do with the rental properties that they have. That's where our concern's coming from, and I think, I think my wife would agree with that.
Okay.
Can I respond?
Yes, you certainly may.
I don't disagree with anything that he said.
Well, you probably need to come up so we can get you on the record.
I don't want to chase you away here, not that. Go right ahead.
He can come back, too.
They can come back.
I just say, I don't disagree with anything that he said, and I share his concerns. I think in our circumstance, those concerns are not real, but we can't predict what happens down the road. Parking, I mean, again, I don't think parking is a real problem here, but you all might think it is. My son parked on the street even though he had a garage he could park in because, you know, I bought the house at 2 Merkel Street and gave it to my daughter, and I let her have the garage, and made my son walk up, which I just thought was fair, because she had to walk farther. But he said there was never a problem finding parking on the street, even when he had roommates living in the house with him, and they all parked on the street. So I'm not sure that that's an issue. But I share the concern about what happens to the house when it's sold and I no longer control it. Now, I don't know if it's possible to grant a temporary zoning variance. Maybe it is, and maybe when we sell the house, it goes back to what it was before. I don't know. It would change the marketability of the house, no doubt, but I don't want some slumlord to take over that property either. And somewhere, you know, 40, 50 years down the road, maybe people don't take care of it. It becomes a crappy house again. Right now, it's not.
No, it's looking very, very nice. Well, since you brought up having some kind of temporary arrangement, it is possible for us to grant a temporary use permit, but that permit is only for one year, so...
Can be renewed.
It can be renewed. I believe it can be renewed.
I'd like to think the house won't be on the market around a year, but I didn't think it'd be on the market this long either.
Well, I didn't either.
You know, I mean, my son can't rent out his house while he's in the military. To me, that's not fair.
So how would you feel about a temporary use permit that gave you...
Wouldn't be my first choice, but it would be my second choice.
Okay. And we'll have to ask Mr. Zulik, it can be renewed up to three years? One year at a time? We have done this before.
Well, I, is it, is it, you say you can do it up to three?
Well, I know, I think that's probably two, but I'm not sure. But I know that we have granted a use permit to someone before with, on the assumption and the knowledge that they could renew it at least once, possibly twice, and by which time your son might be home, or the house might be sold.
So if you grant a temporary, does it revert back to what it is currently right now? Is it as of current, triplex if once it's done?
It's not a triplex in my mind. I mean, that's just idiocy to me.
I know in your mind, but what he has legally, what he has legally on paper, what he has legally on paper is a triplex.
Okay. I would ask him to legally give that up, maybe. We'll see.
Well, in my letter to you all, I said, this is what we want. We want 190 with one person, and the main house with maximum 1300.
Right. So it would be okay with you to reduce the payment on that virtual apartment and have no suggestion that it exists anymore?
No rental permit. As far as we know, there was never a rental in that part of the house, 194.
I don't want to have a...
What do you mean, as far as we know?
...for.
No.
We wanted to get rid of it, and we didn't.
We just, we can talk about it.
Well, we're just saying that that's at an end. And in fact, it is at an end because they've incorporated into the house.
But somebody could buy the property, and if they bought the property currently, with the way the rental permits are currently up to date, they could go back and put in that wall.
Right.
Correct.
So...
Absolutely.
But you're willing to get rid of that?
You're willing to let that go.
I don't even think they have to put in a wall. All they have to do is put in a kitchen and one of the other two double rooms.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I could do that tomorrow.
I guess my only other question is, when we've done this before, I don't think we've continued the case and said that you had to re-advertise it as something else. We've simply, simply had the owner agree to a temporary use permit for one year with the supposition that it could be renewed, and voted on that. But we still have to talk about the parking because that is still an issue.
The other issue is to reduce the number in the one...
Well, he's only asking for one, and he's asking for three unrelated and the other, and he's willing to give up the permit on the one that...
94.
Is a virtual apartment.
Yeah, three unrelated, and then...
So then the question is, would, if you gave it a temporary use permit, I suppose you could say that you could give a temporary use permit to the parking, too. I don't know about that.
How many bedrooms does the main house now have?
Pardon me?
How many bedrooms and bathrooms does the main house now have?
Main house has three bedrooms and a bath upstairs, and a bath downstairs.
Okay. And the bedrooms are sort of big, so he could put more than one person in there if someone else were renting it. I mean, someone else could ask.
I wouldn't call them big.
Okay.
But a couple kids or...
But the code office has a sort of a narrow definition.
Well, maybe under the code. I don't know how many people you put in those rooms, but they're not particularly big. But there are extra rooms downstairs.
Sure.
Since that apartment doesn't exist anymore.
Well, we're not quite sure how to proceed at the moment.
Yeah.
Let's talk about parking. How do you feel about that?
It still seems to me that the arrangement that exists would provide for four, potentially four parking spaces, where five currently is what's required, but I...
Why is five required? Four required?
Because you have to have two for the main house. Two, you have to have two even if you have one unit. That's how the code reads. So it's two and three.
Okay, but I'm reading three and one, so...
No, it's two and three. I mean, that's what it says.
Two per unit.
Two per unit.
Just a person.
All right. Thank you.
I'm confused. Can I ask?
Yeah, I'm confused, too. Let's see. Total of four tenants, okay, where five parking spaces are the minimum required. So they're saying you need two parking spaces for the apartment even though it has one person. Does that make sense, Mr. Zulik?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct.
Because it's a, it's a, it's a unit or residence, and so in a residential neighborhood, you have to have two. Well, anyway, you have to have two.
Meaning, so many families have two cars, so even if it's a couple that lives there, they might have two cars, right?
Well, it's not...
Well, even if you have a single person living in that one, the one bedroom, you have one person living there, he's required two parking spots, and they say just for guests.
For a guest, too.
Whatever. So it's a minimum of two parking spots.
Okay.
So I understand how code requires five, but shouldn't this read that there are four parking spaces where five are required instead of there's one parking spot?
Well, because they, because the code office will let them speak. Mr. Zulik, why are they saying they only have one parking space?
The reason they're saying there's only one parking space is because it's in the garage, the one that's in the garage.
And it doesn't meet the square feet.
Okay.
The garage.
And what about the parking pad?
Right, next to the, the parking pad is sufficient for a car. That's two.
That's a big pad. It's a concrete pad right there.
Well, the, I don't know when the pad was put in. Apparently, when they originally filled out the rental permit, they said they had one parking spot, and sometime over the years, more got put in. So it doesn't, it was all grandfathered.
Okay, but they in fact do have more than one parking space. They certainly have two parking spaces.
On that pad.
I mean, you can't discount the pad just because of, because the permit only lists one. There are parking spaces available.
Well, was the pad proposed to put in, or is the pad actually there?
The pad is there. It's been there for a long time.
It would need a little bit of work to make it the right dimensions, but...
Let's see if there's a picture of it in there.
It is. It's here.
So really, there'd be...
Well, no, no, no. I mean, a photo.
Oh, photo?
I'm looking for a photo. I didn't see it.
There was a photo there of the...
Not exactly.
But you can't really get a picture of it.
Well, the measurements he's got shown on this, on that pad actually aren't, aren't big enough for parking spots.
Right, that's what I...
So it doesn't have one.
Not even one parking spot.
Even the pad, he's showing 16 feet deep.
Right.
Eighteen and a half wide, so it's not deep enough.
Deep enough.
That's one car.
It's 16 feet, and then there's a two-foot sidewalk.
Where you can't get the sidewalk.
And level with it, and then there's shrubbery.
Well, I'm just looking at the drawing that's here. So it just shows 16 feet deep.
But there's two more feet of concrete after that.
Yeah, but it's only nine feet wide. Is that wide enough? No.
I mean, it's nine feet wide.
11.5 at that one point.
Right, so I'm at 20, right. So even though you could go up there, you can't use it. Oh, he wants to get out rid of all these things. Right.
So technically, you, it's been properly, you know...
It would be 18 by 16.
Measured, and it's only one...
Yeah, I mean, you could, yeah, you could put a car there.
I'm sure that I've seen more than one car there.
Legal size, the way this, the way the draw.
The legal size of that is 18, six by 18.
To get in and out.
Plus the triangle at the bottom. Maybe we're not looking at the same aspect.
Oh, in terms of...
Well, I'm looking at...
Length of parking space, right.
See, you got...
So you just have to make sure you're off.
It goes 16 to here. See this sidewalk that comes around? This sidewalk is actually a continuation of the pad, but aesthetically, you know, you, normally you would have a sidewalk there, but it actually is 18 feet from this point to this point, all concrete. So really, you just need to show 18 to here.
So then theoretically...
And then you're...
And then you're...
This is two.
So you definitely have a variance between...
Yeah, the pad goes all the way up here to here, and it is 18 feet on this side. If you took out this mimosa tree, which I hate, it just looks like a giant...
It's not a good place to have three parking places.
Then, you know, this is available for parking as well. In that case, in that case, if that's 18 feet, you have legally one parking spot because you have to be 18, 10 by 18, and you're only 18 and a half feet wide. Even though you could, legal parking spot is 10 by 18. 10 by 18 or 9 by 20. Okay, so if you add the two and a half feet here to the house, you're now at 22 and a half.
Oh, I'm sure it's...
But that's grass right now. It is. But I mean, that's, that's grass. And I'm just saying, what is there now, how come the...
It doesn't...
You know, with the question... Well, if it's contingent on getting a variance, a full concrete.
Right, it's weekend. Yes, it's weekend, last week.
It's not a thing. I understand.
I went there at 5:30 tonight, and I gave final approval, but the district was pretty well full.
But the way it is currently, it doesn't...
But this Tuesday, it was pretty full.
This way, 18 and a half this way.
So...
Which would be one spot.
Because it's not...
The way it is...
I think it's not a good...
Now, I gotta go with the pitch that I'm following.
I need your bible kind of guy as your job.
Allow exemption for...
That's why you have to come here.
Okay. I'm on the same page.
Yeah, but we can't... Parking's an issue.
Let's see what you all decided without us.
Yes.
Anything?
Mr. Zulik, what did you all decide?
Well, if that pad goes 18 feet deep...
It doesn't. It's 16 feet.
So it's 18 when you add the two-foot sidewalk.
Well, the parking on the sidewalk is not...
Well, the pad is all one.
Sidewalk isn't required. It doesn't have to be a sidewalk.
He's saying that the pad, it was used, but the pad and sidewalks, all one, still combined. So he's saying it's 18 feet of solid concrete, and if it's 18 feet of solid concrete, that would be one parking spot because the width is not wide enough for two spots.
But if I took out a flower bed and put more concrete in, then it would be 20.5 feet.
Okay.
Well, which would still not be wide enough?
Yes.
What total you'd need...
It would, because then it'd go nine, because there's...
Nine and nine. Gotcha. You've got it.
Okay, but it's only showing the width here, even if you take out where those scrub trees are. It's still only 18 by 6, so where's the 20? To be over off of, so are we talking about the city right-of-way here, why they couldn't even park here?
I don't know.
So that was the other, so who, you know, they could be sitting on the city right-of-way.
Well, they were talking about stack, stacked parking from the garage, behind the garage, and then there was a comment about this big part of the city right-of-way, and so you couldn't actually legitimately park in that area. And I would think if this was part of the city right-of-way, then we're probably talking on the way down.
We don't know.
We don't know. That's, we don't know. We don't know where the city right-of-way is.
That might be something that he has to take up with somebody who's...
Yeah, it's gonna have to. I think there's a lot of issues here that need to be dealt with beyond us.
Well, I guess my question at this point is what you think about granting a temporary use permit for one year and not granting the variance for parking at all, but include that in the temporary use, that you would allow him to use the two parking spaces that seem to be available for one year and park three on the street for a year, but it wouldn't be permanent.
What would happen if he sold the house in the interim?
Yeah, we've got issues.
Then somebody would have to come back to us and see.
But it would revert back to the situation that the neighbors are unhappy with.
Right.
If a family bought the house?
No, if a landlord bought it.
If a landlord bought the house.
It's a kind of expensive house for a landlord, so...
Oh, you never know. It's not a landlord who might buy it, but a parent might buy it of students. We've seen that happen.
Well, that's a landlord.
Well, I understand, but people don't think of that as a landlord, but it does happen. I've seen it.
So I'm concerned that the situation that the neighbors are complaining about would still obtain if the house were then sold.
I think I can respond to that, but maybe adequately, maybe not. If I rented that house, or my son rented that house, I would rent it in as his agent. There would be a lease involved, and so if there's a one-year variance, there would be a one-year lease, and even with a new buyer, that lease would not be broken, couldn't be.
No, I'm actually thinking about the permits, the rental permits and all that, and that it would revert to what you have on paper right now, when we're sort of trying to improve the whole situation of the house.
Okay, so at the end of the year, it would revert to...
What?
A single apartment.
A virtual apartment.
Well, he's giving up that permit, so it would no longer exist.
Well, can we do that in a temporary?
Can we do that in a temporary?
He's already agreed to that, so that would be a condition of the temporary use permit.
Of the temporary, okay.
And having not been in use for a year, any grandfathering or anything that goes with it would be lost.
Well, we still have a neighbor saying, without the owner as one of the residents, which is what we have now, regardless of the fact we have rental properties within that unit, that, that they are concerned.
Yes, I understand.
And I don't, you know, most times when we have a neighbor, a property, adjacent property owner come in and make a comment about the situation, not favorably, we'd like to adhere to what the neighbors have to say.
I understand. I understand that. It's one neighbor, but I also understand it's also, this house has been empty for quite a few years, which is also not a good situation for safety reasons.
Well, it's, part of it has been rented, so it hasn't been unoccupied. I mean, there is a tenant in the apartment.
Part of the house. Part of the one tenant in the apartment.
Correct. Right. That is still...
And the house has been on the market for two and a half years and has been beautifully restored from a rather deteriorating situation in which it was. So, I guess I'm looking for some kind of compromise that would keep the number of people in the house at a minimum and keep it under Mr. Arbuthnot's supervision, even though he's not living in it, and, um, make something happen right now that is not permanent. But if you don't agree that we should do that, I think I'll just make that a motion, that we would grant a temporary use permit for one year, and that that would allow two rental units on the property where, where, where only one is allowed, and it would allow him temporarily to use two parking spaces, which seem to be available on the property, and allow three on, on, on street parking. And the condition that goes with this was that the rental permit for the property, for the apartment at 194 would be relinquished forever from Mr. Arbuthnot.
I, I think I'm going to speak against your motion.
Okay.
I, I see problems. Suppose, suppose you grant this one-year variance. It has a starting date and a...
It's not a variance. It's just temporary use.
Temporary use permit. It, it has a starting date and an ending date.
Yeah, it would.
Suppose, I mean, what, what is, this is the middle of February. If we can't find a renter in the middle of February and somebody wants to move in in May, or they want to move in in June, halfway through their one-year lease, they lose the right to live there.
No, because you would come back and ask for...
I would come back and ask, but it may not be granted.
Well, would we be so lenient as to not grant it after we already did grant it?
Well, you're, you're assuming that we're granting this. Now, you're giving him the permission.
Assuming that you granted it.
I'm just saying, if we granted it...
And assuming we're all here.
Assuming you're all here, right? It could be a completely different composition to the board who says, "By God, we're not varying any."
Okay. So, we either have to, uh, think about that, which apparently is not going to be as agreeable as I had thought it might be.
Well, I hadn't anticipated, so I hadn't really thought it through.
Sure, okay. So, here are the options. We can, we can put a motion on the floor for the variance and see how that goes, or we can continue this until you've thought about it some more and know better what you want to do, and perhaps you might even speak to the city council and to the code office about where that right-of-way really is and whether you can use it or not, and whether the city council would grant you permission to use the right-of-way if you're on it.
Well, that's a reasonable alternative as well. So, if you do an up or down vote on my request, does that make a use permit out of the question?
Well, I guess you could come back to us later date, or maybe we could just go in. No, we don't have to wait.
And I, I think I would like an up or down vote on, on what I'm asking for.
Okay, all right. So, have we got a motion for what he is asking for, for a variance?
No.
You know, I want to just make sure that's not, uh, having that virtual apartment or whatever, that's part of the variance, that would not exist, that you would relinquish that, you were asking for that.
That was with the temporary use permit.
That's correct. 194 would disappear.
If you could make that a condition, if you were...
Would you like that a condition in this variance?
Yes, that's, I accept that.
If we can make that a condition of the variance, I think that would be great.
Part of my reasoning here for, for wanting this voted on and then deal with this temporary use thing later is I'd like an opportunity to talk to my son about it.
Okay.
See what he would like to do. I only own half of this place.
That's fine, that's just fine, okay. So, have we got a motion?
Okay, we're asking for a motion. I mean, I can just read as it is. On the condition that 194 rental permit...
Be relinquished and that apartment, the rental of that apartment be rescinded or the opportunity...
Well, just relinquish the rental permit, then it's done.
Permanently, yes, okay.
Oh, 194. Permanently, well, if you relinquish, it is, it, you can't, I mean...
That's redundant, you're saying that's redundant.
No, you could give it up and then you could get it back.
No, well...
Well, you could ask for it.
You have to come to us to get it back, right?
I don't know, you could go to the code office and they'd say, "Oh, well, it's fine."
Yeah, you could go to the code office and get it, couldn't they?
No, because it's an R1.
Okay, let's...
It's an R1, okay. Okay. Unless, um, I move that the board consider case number 10-02V, appellant Jack Abernott for property located, located at 190, 192 East State Street. Appellant is requesting variances from section 230401A1 to allow two rental units on one lot where one rental unit is the maximum allowed, and from, excuse me, section 2311, Table B, off-street parking requirements, to allow duplex with a total of four tenants with one parking space where five parking spaces are the minimum required. Along with this ordinance, um, I forget how I was going to word it. The appellant also will agree to relinquish the rental permit for 194 East State Street.
Should this be two, because we're using the garage?
Right. So, I would like to amend that since Mr...
If that's not in the documentation, though, how can it go to, without actually measuring it and checking it?
Well, you're probably right, in which case...
I don't think you can do, I think...
Okay, we, maybe we should just, maybe we should do that.
Well, we do have measurements of the garage. We do know that that is available for one space.
One space.
Right here.
Right, but the part that's near the street is what we don't know.
So, we might really be better off to continue this to next month and just rescind that motion. Would you agree to that, so that you can find out about the right-of-way?
It feels as if there's kind of a number of questions here.
Okay.
But, I mean, I personally would be more comfortable if, I don't know, if John Paskey would come...
So, what you're saying is a series of questions that we've brought up this evening that need to be answered before we could make a full decision.
Is the board in agreement on rescind my motion?
Yes, and given the fact that it's going to be hard for you to rent it in February, as you already said, coming back next month in a continuing situation...
Or two weeks.
Two weeks, actually, it's two weeks.
This is not a new issue, we've been thinking about it a long time.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
That doesn't bother me.
Okay.
And, you know, as an academic, I, I would favor acting only with full information.